Wednesday, May 17th, 2017. If you all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the Secretary please note the roll? And I would ask for a motion to excuse Commissioner Milton at this time, please.
Commissioner, I move that we excuse Commissioner Milton from this evening's meeting.
My second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Kish, seconded by Commissioner Maloney, to excuse Commissioner Milton. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. We'll go ahead and move into the minutes of April 19th, 2017, planning and zoning commission, and I will take a motion when ready.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes of April 19th.
My second.
Been moved by Commissioner Barnes, seconded by Commissioner Kish. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Just a tidbit of housekeeping as we move down the agenda. Item number 8.5, the crania at Palm Valley. That is being postponed and will not be heard at this evening's meeting. So if there's anybody from the audience that is here for that agenda item, you're free to go. We won't be discussing it tonight. With that, I'll ask for any public comment from the public that is a non-agenda item. Are there any speaker cards? All right. Item number six, disclosure of ex parte communication.
I do.
Commissioner Barnes?
The first item up, 173500005. That is my church, and I'm the architect of record for the project. So, the city attorney has told me that I have to recuse and leave the room when you vote.
That is duly noted, and we will make sure that happens. Thank you. Any other ex parte communication from commissioners? None? All right. Item number seven, there is no old business. And as we move into our new business, at this time, I will ask to excuse Commissioner Barnes at this time before we start our staff presentation, and we'll get you back in here as we move on to the second agenda item. With that, I will open the public hearing for the special use permit to allow a church in a PAD zoning district. It looks like Karen will be presenting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. This is the 24 acres that the refinery church is purchasing at the southeast corner of Indian School and State Road 303, within the PB 303 PAD. The church will be built on the southern two-thirds of the site, and the northern one-third will be held for future commercial development. The first phase of the church, you can see it down there in the corner towards the point. The first phase of the church will be 25,000 square feet with future expansion, bringing it to 60,000 square feet. And the curved access road that comes in off of Indian School Road to provide access to the church will be constructed by Sunbelt Holdings, the developer of PB 303. The landscape plan shows the focus on outdoor space to the south of the church and to the east of the Phase 1 parking that will be provided initially. The future parking will be constructed when the church is built out to the 60,000 square feet. These are the elevations, east, north, west, and south. And as you can see, the colors, the materials, the architectural style are all very compatible with existing development within PB 303 and also within the surrounding area. And because the church meets all the criteria for the issuance of a special use permit, compatibility with the area, conformance with the general plan, and in this particular location with Luke Air Force Base's flying mission, and is not detrimental to any of the surrounding properties, staff is recommending approval of the SUP, subject to stipulations in your staff report, and we ask that the commission recommend approval as well. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and the project engineer is here as well if you have any questions of him.
Thank you, Karen. Is there any questions for staff at this point in time? Would the applicant wish to address the commission? Or any questions for the applicant? All right. Seeing none, do we have any speakers cards or anyone from the audience that'd like to speak on this issue? Okay. With that, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion on 8.1.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item number 173500005, special use permit to allow church on pad zoning district.
My second.
It was moved by Commissioner Kish, seconded by Commissioner Maloney for approval. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Would staff? Thank you, Karen. All right. We'll move on to agenda 8.2. This is the use permit for a convenience use drive-through restaurant. And it looks like Steve will be presenting on that. Welcome, Steve.
Thank you.
And I'll open the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. We have a use permit request before you tonight. It is a Panera Bread Cafe. As a restaurant with a drive-through, it does require a use permit, and that use permit does require review and approval through the planning commission and city council. Thus, the application before you tonight. The property is located within the Pebble Creek Marketplace PAD. That property was zoned, initially zoned in 2007, amended in 2014, and that was for the inclusion of the Winco Food Store there to the west. And then the site plan. This is the proposed site plan for the Panera, and access is from Pebble Creek Parkway. It'll come into the site, the drive-through, and parking fields kind of wrap around the building. This is the drive-through window right here. And with the drive-through window, we do have a city code requirement that drive-through windows may not face a public street. In the past, however, we have had users propose canopies over the drive-throughs and screening. And if an applicant does go forward with that kind of design element, then staff has interpreted that as drive-through not facing the street because they've adequately screened it. And this is the elevations for the proposed Panera. And you can see in this elevation here, this is kind of looking at it, the roof elements and the screening down the side. Then this is the elevation that you would see from Pebble Creek Parkway. And it'll, but this view doesn't show, so there'll be a lot of additional landscaping along Pebble Creek and along the site. But here, they have the brick, and then the trellis screening, and then the trellis roof. So with those elements, we've looked at that, and we've concluded that this will not have any visual impact to the street. Panera Bread will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and without any residential adjacent to the site, we find no issue with those hours of operation. Also, with this residential not being close, especially not within 500 feet of the site, the nearest residential is over 1,200 feet. We went with an alternative citizen review that did not require a formal neighborhood meeting, but we did send postcards to all surrounding property owners. To date, staff has not received any public inquiry on this request. For the public hearing, we did notice through the newspaper with a sign posted on the property, and again with a postcard mailed to property owners, we've not seen, received any public inquiry on those notices either. As provided in a staff report, we do find that the use permit will be materially, will not be materially detrimental to the surrounding area, and will be compatible with the surrounding uses in the area. As such, we are recommending approval, subject to the two steps in the staff report. With that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Steve. Is there any questions for Steve?
Is this in addition to the Panera on the other side of the street? Yeah, but isn't Paradise now Panera?
Mr. Chair, Commission members, this would be a replacement for that.
Okay.
Location.
Oh, replacement for that location, okay. And so to get in, say you're coming down Pebble Creek Parkway, you'd be able to get in to the drive-through from there, or do you have to go down McDowell? I don't, there's so many lines on this piece of paper, I'm sorry. To get into the Panera Bread from Pebble Creek Parkway, would you have to take a right on McDowell and go in that way? Or would you be able to come in off of Pebble Creek Parkway?
Mr. Chair, Commission members, you will be able to get in from Pebble Creek Parkway. There'll be at least a couple entrances. This is, I know there are a lot of lines on a map. This right here, if you're coming southbound on Pebble Creek Parkway, you can come in right here and come down and enter the drive-through here. And it'll wrap around, and you'll come out here, and you can just go back out the same way if you'd like. Or you can go eventually, when the site develops, there'll be driveways up to McDowell and the rest of the shopping center as well, once the center does build out.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Is the applicant here, and would they like to speak? Any questions for the applicant?
None.
No, we're good.
Is there any comments from the public or any speaker cards? None? With that, thank you, Steve, and I'll close the public hearing, and I will take a motion on 8.2.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item number 17300001, a special use permit for a convenience drive-through restaurant on Pebble Creek Parkway.
Is there a second?
My second.
Moved by Commissioner Kish, seconded by Commissioner Maloney. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Steve. You won't have to go far, I don't think. Item number 8.3, this is a text amendment to City of Goodyear's signed ordinance, and I will open the public hearing, and I will ask Steve to present on this issue again.
Mr. Chair, Commission members, this is an item that I know you're familiar with, having seen this through a couple of work sessions. We also have tonight with us Ellen Van Riper. She's an attorney who provided our legal expertise throughout this entire process as we looked at adopting our new sign code. So when we do get to the end, Mr. Chairman, myself, any of the staff, Ellen, we'll be available for any questions.
Thank you.
But I have a short PowerPoint presentation here just to run through everything. And with a formal adoption of text amendment to our zoning ordinance, we do require commission and council approval. Attached to the materials, the staff report, you did see the draft ordinance that will go to city council, and that city council hearing will be June 26th. And this is some of the history. We've been working on it for, you know, a couple of years now, and we just finished up with the city council workshop session last month. And the other thing I'd probably note from this is we had our business outreach meetings with our local businesses in January and February. This is where we are now through this process, at the adoption stage before commission and council. And tonight, just again, kind of how we did at the work session, just want to go through each section and just a high-level look again, let you know maybe some of the changes that we made, the public outreach efforts that we did. And again, why we're doing this, again, it was the Reed, the Gilbert case, that was a main reason behind it. We wanted the uniform and consistent administration of our regulations. We wanted to make sure our commercial and non-commercial speech, we were equal there. And also, direction from commission and council, look for additional ways where we could allow more signage opportunities. These are the 15 sections that make up the new sign code. And I'll go over each one of these real quickly. 7-1, our purpose, why we're doing a sign code, and a couple of changes here. Just wanted to mention our protection of the non-commercial speech, add additional measures there, and our substitution section, so that if you do have a commercial message, you can flip that to a non-commercial message at any time, again, to remove any sort of favoritism from our code. Definitions. You see, we changed a few, removed a few, noticed in the remove section, a lot of the ones that were removed were the ones that called out the sign by what it said. And again, that was from the Reed case. We wanted to remove those as much as we could, get to the content neutrality for the code. Requirements for permits, requirements for conformity, no major changes here with how we process signed permits. Exemptions, try to reduce the number of exemptions, again, for that consistent fair treatment for signs coming into the city. Our general sign regulations, not much changed here. Probably the main thing I want to focus on here, where no non-governmental signs in a public right-of-way or other city property, that's a carryover from the existing sign code. However, speech, you know, First Amendment, we do allow speech allowed in traditional public forums, you know, parks, people protest, that's, we're not regulating that in any sense. Also, political signs in the right-of-way that you see during election season. State statutes govern those, and they have regulations that cities cannot remove them. So while our sign code is silent on them, when they do go up, we're precluded from removing them unless they obviously pose like a sight visibility issue, there's parameters in that code. But again, we're going to be silent in our code and let the state take care of political signs. Sign area and height, no significant changes here. Really, the only change is if the sign's close to the street, we're going to measure it off of the curb in case we have changes in grade. But otherwise, in the center, it's just measured from the adjacent grade. This is where we get into the signage by zoning district, our residential, commercial, and industrial sections. And the first one in the codes, the residential, these are some of the things that we did. Again, just to go over it real quickly, it was to allow additional and, you know, larger, taller signs within the code. Same thing for commercial. There's now provisions where you can get up to a 12-foot-high and 48-square-foot monument sign for your center, where the typical was eight feet. We reduced the separation from 330 feet to 150 feet and allowed one monument sign now per driveway. Typically, it was two per center. Now, if you have several driveways onto an arterial, there's provisions that you could have now several monument signs. Wall sign areas, especially with some of our smaller suites and tenants that didn't have a lot of frontage, when we'd calculate a wall sign for them, what we did was the minimum wall sign area now is 35 square feet. So that was a good minimum size to allow those smaller tenants adequate signage so they could be seen by the public. Industrial, one of the changes, again, a direction from council, they wanted some larger directional signs for truck traffic for some of our larger industrial users, so we built that into the code. Temporary signs, ones not requiring a permit, yard signs, sign walkers, again, those are the ones we'll see associated with non-commercial, more political messages. Those are ones we want to make sure our citizens and residents had the ability to express themselves, and so there's no permit for that. A lot of times, there is even no time limit. So that is something we built into the code for, again, the protection of their right to speak. The ones do require a permit, you'll see those are more commercial, grand opening, special events. Probably what I would like to note for that is, we heard from a lot of our business community, they wanted longer time periods for temporary signage. So if it's a grand opening, special event, really, whatever they choose, we went from about 60 to 80 days to now 120 days where they could have temporary signage. We also bumped up, basically, they're allowed one banner, 48 square feet in area, depending on the size of that building, they could go up to 500 square feet. So a big, large user like Harkins, for example, could get a large banner because it fits their size. Before, they were limited to a 48-square-foot banner. Then the political signs in the right-of-way, that's in our, that's something, again, we touched on, but we're going to be silent in our code, we'll let state law take care of that. Sign packages, I know when we initially discussed this with the commissioner, it was thought, could we still do sign packages? What our research and consultant with Ellen here shows us that we're fine with sign packages. That is still something that we will pursue with those, you know, our larger centers, our mixed-use centers, when they want to come in for a sign package, we have that still built into the code. Same process, they will come to you and the city council for most of those. And then something new, the McDowell Road District, that will be from basically 145th West to Cerebral, and that's the area where you will, could see the possibility for digital displays on monument signs. Prohibited signs, pretty much no changes here from the previous code, except we're allowing electronic message displays. Non-conforming and unsafe signs, not too much change here. We're still going to address the non-conforming and unsafe signs that they need to be addressed. Here, we built in, now with First Amendment getting, with the Reed case coming to the forefront more, we built in some appeals procedures. If we do have a constitutional issue arise, we have a process now for working through that. So basically, what we're hoping we did was that we had more signage permitted in the code for our residents, for our businesses, they're larger, but we're, hopefully, we're maintaining the quality that you see through, throughout the city for our signage. Content neutrality, especially with non-commercial speech, we tried not to favor one over the other, especially with our consistent application of our regulations. And then another one, electronic message displays, that'll be something new for us. Public outreach, we sent three invitations with over 500 people in each invitation that we sent out to our, to our local businesses. And we had three meetings, the 19th to 26th, and then February 1st. And we had several people attend each meeting. We heard, basically, the feedback was, we would like additional signage, longer temporary periods for signage, we need more visibility. And hopefully, when you see the code, you've seen that we've added both temporary and permanent signage opportunities for our businesses. We sent an invitation to a wider state hold group, that was in February, that was the large landowners in the city, our master developers, some of the regional entities in the area, we wanted to solicit input from them. We posted all our draft documents to the city's website, they were available. A lot, all of our invitations pointed back to the website to provide this information for people to read. And then for this, for the neighborhood meeting and all our public hearings, we did our typical legal ad in the paper. So with this, this was that couple sheets of paper that I handed out to you before the meeting. And this is just a rundown of some of the things that the council in their work session last month had brought up. And if there are any questions for the commission, I can definitely go over them. One of the, couple of things they asked were typical for-sale signs that you see used by realtors when they're selling residential property, you know, did we change anything that, do they now require permits? And no, that, that's not a sign that requires a permit from the city. We haven't changed any of the regulations regarding the signage that they can use. We actually made it taller, so we can have a higher sign within the yard for that. Probably the topic that I might bring up with the commission was the flying banners, the feather banners that you see some businesses use currently, that's not a permitted type of signage in the city for various reasons, but some of the ones we noted was, they are, basically, they're prone to wear and tear, they, you know, they, they're flapping the breeze, they proliferate. Usually, it's not just one, it's several. And for a lot of reasons, and I guess I'll point out another one, usually, they're also put in the right-of-way as close to the road as possible. So that was a signage type that we were recommending to, in the code, to not move forward. However, the council did ask us to look, and so we did. We surveyed nine other cities, four allow them, the five do not, and the two that stand out that allow them, they allow them through for grand openings, special events, short-term, not just a blanket allowance, but a short-term. So that was an option that we were offering to the council. Our first option is to still prohibit that type of sign. However, if there was direction to move forward, then we would recommend it be allowed on a temporary basis within that 120-day allowance. And then we'd also recommend that it be allowed for a year. Let us evaluate that process, see how these signs look. If it is something that works or doesn't work, it would give us time to look at it. But that was probably the main one that came out of the council work session that required us to go back and do some more research and surveying, and then that's the information that we will present to the council, this information that we presented to you tonight. And so our recommendation is to, that the commission would recommend approval of the adoption ordinance with the amended Article 7 and the amended Article 9. And that would be then proceed to the city council on June 26th. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my part. I'm available, Ellen's available, and for any questions.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Ellen, for attending this evening. Is there any questions for Steve or Ellen?
I have one. So if a business or entity wants a sign that's, let's say, a little larger, a little taller than what's allowed, they still have an opportunity to pursue that through, through a city process, or is it?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commission members, the conference assigned package is still an avenue for those developments that need unique signage because of the configuration of their site or such. And as you know, through design and such, we'll, we'll review that and then bring that before you and council.
I know that the Gilbert case had to do with a church.
I know that the Gilbert case had to do with a church sign. And which particular, and you might have said it, and I just spaced out, but what particular, is that an exempted sign that doesn't require a permit, or because if it's, it's going to be up weekly for a certain amount of time, is that, it's usually an A-frame or some kind of temporary sign, but I didn't know which particular exemption it fell under.
Chairman, commission members, what we would allow for any kind of business or entity, we have temporary signage opportunities for them. With the Gilbert case and such, that was with directional signs and off-site signage. I guess two things we'll note tonight is the prohib, we, signs within the right-of-way are prohibited within the right-of-way alongs, within medians. So, that's something that's a carryover from our existing code now. That's something Gilbert allowed, but it's something that's not been in the city. We also do not allow off-site signage. So, a business cannot, in one location, put their signage, their A-frame, two blocks away on an intersection. But we do have temporary signage, the banners, like we had discussed, that they can use for their site, a lot of permanent signage.
I just know of a few churches off the top of my head that usually meet at like a school. And they put their sign on the, you know, the, the corner of, you know, intersection in the pedestrian walkway. Is that something that would fall under the exempt or not-allowed case? I'm just trying to figure that out.
That would be a not-allowed case.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Ellen. Appreciate it. Any question, or any comments from the audience, or any speakers' cards? Wonderful. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and I will take a motion on the sign package.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
No, I just, Chairman, we motion to approve item 15-220-0000 to B, text amendment to the City of Goodyear sign ordinance.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Keys, seconded by Commissioner Barnes. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you again. We will move on to item number 8.4. This is an amendment to the El Cidro final PAD, and it looks like we are graced with Joe's presence this evening. Good to see you, Joe. Hope all is well.
Yes, all is well. Mr. Chairman, commission members, thank you. As you noted, this item is a PAD amendment for El Cidro, and El Cidro is located approximately south of Lower Buckeye Road, on both sides of Cotton Lane, east of Citrus, north of Broadway. That's the general, that's the general location of this, of this development, which is, has been before you, both in terms of zoning amendments, PAD amendments, and plating, and some final plats, which, of course, you don't see the final plats, but some final plats were recently approved by the city council, so development is moving forward. The land use plan under the El Cidro PAD has land use categories that range from LDR1 through LDR4, which is, means low-density residential, and it also has commercial, industrial, and multi-use categories. And the property is, intends to be developed in these parcels in phases. And the chart on the slide shows you what the land use designation is for each of the parcels and the typical lot size within those parcels. So, it kind of gives you a feel for where it is. There is basically two requests before you tonight. One is an amendment to the lot coverage maximum for the LDR1, LDR2, and LDR3 land use categories within the project. Here, you see that LDR1 is a typical, a lot at 7,200 square feet. LDR2 is a typical 63,25, and LDR3 is a smaller lot, 57,50, and you see the typical lot sizes. This chart also shows you that the, all of them had a maximum lot coverage of 45%. And the applicant has, the owners asked to modify that to 55% in LDR1, 60% in LDR2, and 50% in LDR3. Most recently, the commission saw a zoning action that changed the side setbacks in the LDR2 zone from five, five and five to five and 10. And with that reduction, it created a more buildable area, and the impact of the change on maximum lot coverage was not fully considered at that time. So, this change will allow that additional area to be used for building, and, and at the same time, we're adjusting the LDR2, or one and three land use categories so that the applicant won't have problems in the future and have to come back before you again. Also involved in this PAD amendment is an adjustment of the parcel boundaries between parcel 1D, 1E, and 2. Parcel 2 is located where the pointer is here, kind of on the eastern side of the, of the property that, that's west of Cotton Lane. Parcel 1D is this parcel here, that's kind of in that, whatever color yellow that is. And then, parcel 1E is the brownish-colored parcel below it. This is the configuration of the lotting as you've seen it most recently, and as was approved in the preliminary plat, and then subsequently in final plats for part of 1D, part of 1E, or part of, and part of 2, and, I'm sorry, part of 1D and parcel 2. 1E has not been final-platted as of yet, but this is the configuration as it is being pursued at the present. In the original land use map for the project, you can see that the, that parcel 2 extended further west, and parcel 1E extended further north, and then there was a little portion of 2 that extended down into 1E. The proposal is to basically modify the, the boundaries to match what has been proposed and approved in, in its plating, so to eliminate any confusion or problems with that. So, that's the presentation in a nutshell. All the public notice requirements for this hearing have been satisfied. We are recommending that the commission recommend to the city council approval of the PAD amendments to increase the maximum lot coverage and make that adjustment in the zoning boundaries as I described. I will point out that the applicant is represented tonight by Mr. Jeff Bliley of Beaz Gilbert Law Firm. If commission has any questions for the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions for staff?
Yes, Commissioner Walters.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Joe, thank you for the presentation. On page three of your presentation, I'm not sure which slide it is, but you referred to the December 2015 change of the side setbacks
Yes.
as being something that is driving the change requested tonight for LDR2. But it doesn't appear that the side setbacks were changed for LDR1 and 3, so what is the reason for the request to change the max lot coverage in those categories?
Chairman, break. Commissioner Walters, there was not a change in the side setbacks on those, but it was noticed at the same time that those setbacks allowed greater lot coverage than what was permitted by the lot coverage standard. So, the applicant took this as an opportunity to modify those at the same time, so as to not to run into a, a problem with a home product that fits the setbacks, but would exceed the maximum lot coverage.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Joe? The applicant is here. Would you wish to address the commission? State your name and address for the record, please.
Jeff Bliley, 701 North 44th Street. Thank you for allowing me to talk. Joe, Joe did a good job of explaining what we're looking for. I think the staff report also kind of went over it. When we did reduce the side yard setbacks about a year or two ago, we, we didn't really pay attention to the max lot coverage like we should have. We're in the process of selling the first phase to Beazer Homes, and they are, they are the ones that precipitated this and said, hey, the 45% doesn't meet what we need in today's market. There's more single-family, more single-story homes being built now with more porches and, and accessory structures. That increases the lot coverage. And so, they needed about a 53% lot coverage for the product they're building. So, we went, and that's why we're doing this. And then, we talked to them about the other lot sizes, as Joe pointed out, and felt we might as well amend those as well to meet the market demands of the home products now and those type of lot sizes. So, just asking for your support.
Just for clarity, the lot coverage means you're going to have more house on that piece of land as opposed to a smaller house on a larger piece of land, or?
Yeah, the lot will, the lot, of course, will stay the same. What it'll allow is us to, yeah, it'll be a larger home on the same-sized lot. It'll still meet all the setback requirements that, that we have.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
I forgot, I open, opened the public hearing. Any other, anybody from the audience, or any speaker cards? Great, I'll close the public hearing. With that, I will take a motion on agenda item 8.4.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve item 17-210-0002.
A second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Barnes, seconded by Commissioner Kish. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Just to reiterate, item 8.5 will be moved and postponed to June 14th, 2017. And with that, we will move into item number nine, staff communication. If there is any.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner. I was trying to be fancy with the sleek little microphone, but apparently, it's user error, so. But thank you for your consideration and vote tonight. We had some very large projects that moved through, El Cidro being one of them that we've been working on for a long time. And as Joe indicated, those changes are really to precipitate, help precipitate the development of the property, and we're really excited about this project moving forward. And then, as Steve Coretia worked diligently on, and Katie and her team on the sign ordinance, that has been a labor of love. And we are pleased to be near the end of it. We feel that we've really reached out to the different constituency groups in the city in order to get feedback. We took diligent time, did a lot of research with Ellen as well, our legal consultant, and we're, we're pleased to where we are. We feel like we've struck an appropriate balance of meeting the new case law requirements as well as balancing the needs of our community from an aesthetic standpoint, while still improving the opportunities for additional signage to our businesses. So, just kudos to Steve and the team for their hard work on that project. Just to kind of recap you on some actions that the council has recently took. On May the 8th, the council did approve the La Spreces PAD amendment to delete one lot size and add a smaller lot size, so that was approved. The council likewise also approved the preliminary plat for phases 2B1, 2B2, 2B3, and 2B5 for La Spreces that you all considered previously. So, that was also approved by the council on May the 8th. Special use permit for the Cell Tower in Mobile, if you all remember that, we considered that last month. That was considered and approved by the council on May the 8th. There was some discussion about the chain-link fence going around the, the Cell Tower. And it was explained that the rationale for that is we don't have a whole lot of staff down in Mobile, and it was really a safety concern about that. So, the council voted to allow that to happen down there. The council also approved Ballpark Village, which is another exciting project that we'll be moving through. And as a matter of fact, just today, we had a pre-application meeting with a developer who's going to build on part of that project. So, that's exciting, and delighted to be able to work through and, and see those plans come to life. The PAD amendment for PV 303 West 1 to allow the electric fence out there is, has not been considered by council yet. That will be going on May 22nd. The special use permit to allow an inert landfill, if you remember, at the, just to the west of Walmart, that was considered and approved by the council on May the 8th. And then, I'd also like to remind you about our date change coming up. If you remember, the commission voted last month to advance our regular meeting from here on out as a, as a permanent meeting date to the second Wednesday of every month. And again, the rationale for that is we'll be able to turn the cases that you all consider at this meeting to the council meeting in the very same month, which essentially saves our customers two, three weeks of wait time. So, we're really excited about that. Additionally, I'd like to just give a big shout-out to Katie and her team for the hard work that they've been doing. We've been really, as you've heard us talk about, work on process improvements. We have reduced our review times by about 50%, roughly. But at the same point in time, and this is the dramatic aspect, our activity level just has increased by 60% year over year. So, things have ramped up, and we've become more effective with the same amount of people. And it's really a testimony to Katie's leadership and the hard work, excuse me, the hard work that all the planners, Katie, Joe, Alex, Steve, Karen put in. So, just a, a big thank you to them for that. Last thing I'll leave you with is last, I think it was last week. Alex and I had the opportunity of attending the National APA, American Planning Association Conference in New York City. We were there, I was there for three days, I believe. And attended some fabulous seminars, sessions, got some really good information. One of the projects that we're working on as a staff is what we call Project Hip and Trendy, which is to create new residential zoning districts that are in response to market demand, much like El Cidro, where they've requested some smaller lot sizes. And so, just like Hudson Commons and some other projects that we've had through the city's process lately. So, how do we, how do we appropriately respond to market demand for smaller lot sizes, maintain the quality and the streetscape appearance? And so, we do that through the PAD process right now, but again, if we can create just straight zoning districts for that and have performance standards for each one of those zoning districts, it will make the process much, much easier, not only for our customer, but it'll also bring certainty to the city and to the process overall. So, that's a little bit long-winded to say that many, I talked to several other cities at, at the conference who have lots as small as 25 feet wide. And what they're doing to ensure that the streetscape is appropriate, it's high-quality development, they're providing for appropriate parking and recreational space for these neighborhoods. And so, we will be, as part of Project Hip and Trendy, reaching out to our colleagues, cities around the country, trying to learn best practices from them. So, you'll see that come through later this summer, and I think in August is what we're shooting for. So, we're really excited about that. It's a, a good learning opportunity to, to see what other cities are, are challenges they're facing and solutions they're offering. So, that's the update that I have. Did you have anything to add?
Very good. Thank you for the update, and I commend you guys on speeding all that up. I think that's a a huge thing for our customers, especially if we're taking on a greater workload on you guys. So, you are all to be commended for the work that you do. Any questions for staff? Perfect. I'll adjourn the meeting.